We want to welcome all of you here this evening and ask you to cooperate with us in that this is the legislative body of Williamson County. We are conducting very serious business tonight, and as a result of that, I'd like to ask each of you if you have a cellphone or pager that either be turned off or placed on silent so as not to interrupt our proceedings this evening. As we start the meeting tonight, I want to start the meeting to make this announcement because one of our colleagues, Commissioner Mary Mills, has lost her beloved brother. The Reverend Ned Knowles passed away this past Wednesday, and I'd like to announce to you that visitation that the Reverend Ned Knowles will line state on Wednesday, this Wednesday, from six to eight PM at the Shore Chapel AME Church here in Franklin. And then on Thursday, from ten to eleven, he will line state at the Limestone Baptist Church. And then there will be visitation with the family from eleven to twelve o'clock on Thursday, and the funeral will be at noon on Thursday at the Limestone Baptist Church here in Franklin. So I wanted all of you to be aware of that, and I would like to ask Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, when she leads us in our invocation, in just a very short minute, that Cheryl, that you remember Sister Mills and her family and the loss of her brother. So if you would, if you would, please stand. We'll have the invocation and then the pledge to the flag.
If you would, bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come here tonight as humble servants of you, our Lord, pray that you will guide, guard, and direct us in the matters of business tonight. We asked a special prayer for Mary Mills' brother, who is Reverend Ned Knowles, and his passing, and we pray that you be with the families and loved ones as they go through this grieving time. We pray that you will watch over us all as a county, city, school systems, any area that we all participate in, way we have a good spirit and carry this with us in every way. Also, I'd like to say, since we just had some Irish friends here and their counsel, may the road rise up to meet you, and may God bless you all. Amen.
Would you please face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would, press your white button to indicate your presence this evening. Commissioner Russell Little, okay. If you would, record the vote to Madam Clerk.
Twenty-four present.
Thank you, twenty-four present, and I want to thank each of you for being here this evening. Approval of the minutes of the regular February eleventh, two thousand and eight County Commission meeting. Each member of the Commission that received these in the minutes in the mail, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Barnwell, second, but Commissioner Davis to approve the minutes. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. These were all provided to you and sent out to you. I'll entertain a motion to accept these.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Shaw, find the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second, on the Highway Commission minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of the Highway Commission minutes. Citizens Communications, this is a part of our agenda where we allow citizens to sign in to address the committee, and let me just refresh for the County Commission's edification and also the audience. This is a fifteen-minute time period that the Commission sets aside for citizens' comments. There'll be a maximum of fifteen minutes that will be allowed to speak, and they are, this fifteen-minute period is divided equally among the speakers, and tonight we have six speakers, one, two, three, four, five, six, so I will expect each of you to limit your comments to two minutes or less, and if you hear the gavel strike, please be seated and quit talking.[577.16][577.16](Laughter). So the first on the agenda will be Dawn Johnson, one twelve Bridge Street. If you would, please, and for the record, to give us your name and the address so that we'll have that in the record, if you would, please, Ms. Johnson.
My name is Dawn Johnson, one twelve Bridge Street. I am the president of Keep Williamson Beautiful, and I'm here tonight to talk about two upcoming events in Williamson County. The first is the Great American Cleanup, and this event runs March first through May thirty-first. We are encouraging individuals and organizations to look around their communities and see where they can make a difference. You can adopt a road, spot a stream, plant a tree, or educate citizens about the need to keep our community beautiful. Keep Williamson Beautiful will provide trash bags, vests, grabbers, and signage to make sure any event you have is safe. Our Great Williamson County Wide Cleanup Day will be Saturday, April the twenty-sixth. If you are looking for a volunteer opportunity, please call seven nine zero five eight four eight. Our next event is our First Environmental Leadership Classes. We are sponsoring a six-week course starting April the third. They run every Thursday, six-thirty to eight-thirty through May eighth. There will be two topics every night, including global warming with Karen Cochran with Answer the Call, litter in Williamson County and your carbon footprint, energy-saving ideas from Middle Tennessee Electric, living and shopping green with Karen Emerson McPeak, Williamson County landfill with Louis Bumpus, household hazardous waste with Paula Smith of the State of Tennessee, recycling with Joanne Jackson of Williamson Recycles, roadside litter and cleanups with Sergeant Eddie Stevens, air quality with Debbie Henry of the TMA Group, and composting with Master Gardener Gary Clavenger, and reducing solid waste by Carrie Hembry of the Tennessee Solid Waste Education Program. The class is twenty-five dollars and will be held at four twentieth century court in Franklin. You can register at keepwilliamsandbeautiful.org or call seven nine zero five eight four eight. We're just encouraging all citizens to get involved. We want to especially thank Mayor Anderson and Commissioner Hayes and the entire Commission for continuing their support of Keep Williamson Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lillian Stewart.
I didn't see it.
Okay. We'll move on to the next one. David Garrett.
Good evening. As many of you know, I'm the president of the Heritage Foundation of Williamson County and Franklin. I want to talk just briefly about the Fleming Hall at Battleground, the old historic battleground. As this Commission knows, there's a great history of the Heritage Foundation working with this body for the betterment of the county and specifically the old BGA campus. You know, when the Everbright houses were being discussed, there were some who advocated tearing those down. Instead, it was decided they should be sold. And as you all know, you've got significant monies back into the coffers of the county, and the homes are now being restored and are huge advantage to both the county and the city of Franklin. We think, you know, later some people opposed the Middle College going into one of the buildings. The Heritage Foundation took a middle-road approach and said, you know, this property's been used for years and years for education, and it's only appropriate that it continue. So we took that approach versus those groups who wanted to have nothing at Battleground except it to be returned to an all, to a battlefield. However, with the discussion today about tearing down Fleming Hall, we think, A, that's a bad precedent because it's a great historic resource. The building is almost a hundred years old. It has a rich history, as y'all know, with education in this county. It's also been nominated for the ten most endangered historic sites in Tennessee. We're asking instead that y'all defer action on this for a period of like sixty days and allow some of the historic community who are experts in renovation and remodeling to look at the reports and assess the building and see if all or a portion of it can be renovated and readapted for continued use versus just tearing it down. I do believe if the building's torn down, there will be a significant number in the community who are going to be opposed to anything being built back, instead leaving it more for the battlefield. I think readapting this building, if it can be done, is the best use and a good use of money by the county. What we're asking is just to have an opportunity for those who have great background in adaptive reuse to look at it, because as you know, although they may be in engineering and construction, unless they specialize in historic properties, old buildings are really unique when you go into the remodeling phase. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
One minute left.
Her beautiful hair caught in my button. I'm Mary Pierce, and I'm the executive director of the Heritage Foundation. Thank you for having this time that I can comment. I have attended many, many, many of the county property committee meetings and, quite frankly, did not come the last three months, which I guess I should have, because it was clear that the direction the property committee was going was to save Fleming Hall. And I was surprised when I got a call from a reporter asking me what I thought about the county voting to demolish the building, because I had not heard that and I had not been to either two or three property committee meetings. This building is eligible for the National Register. It's a historic resource. I have received emails today from people who are concerned, and I'm going to quickly share some of those thoughts with you. One is David Wood, who was an educator for forty years. He was a boarding student at BGA, and he said the first thing he did when he retired back to Franklin was to write some of you all and the county mayor, asking to please give attention to restoring the old BGA academic building, Fleming Hall. And he says, "I'm sure it's in very bad shape, but it's more than just about a building. It's about people. This is not about saving a tree, a train depot, store, or house. There are so many local, regional, and national leaders who attended school in that facility, and certainly Franklin has more than its share. Names like Fleming, Pinkerton, Guffey, and Campbell immediately come to mind. In a city and county that prides itself on historic preservation, I find it distressing that something of this importance could not and would not be saved." Calvin Leahy, who is certainly someone I always go to when talking about old buildings, said, "I am familiar with the structure. I did a walk through an investigation of the condition of the building with other community preservation contractors. My conclusion is that this building far exceeds the conditions needed for restoration. I have made it an occupation to restore old buildings that others would shy away from, but every farmhouse, commercial building, barn, and other Main Street buildings I have brought back to life have far exceeded the return I expected in value monetarily and in the usefulness to the community. Our city and county have built a national reputation on the great success of this community to preserve its past. Fleming Hall is one of our greatest assets. The future will be even greater if we continue to strive to not become any town USA." Tommy Shell says, he is also a preservation contractor, has done buildings on Main Street. "I've been told at one time or the other that most every old house needs to be bulldozed. I've had the same thing said of most of the buildings on Main Street. We were told the factory should be torn down. As a taxpayer, I feel abused that we would tear down Fleming Hall. Historic properties add more value to our community than any other resource we have. Restoration makes money. Preservation is a great business, and all of us in it have made money. Our community solicits all types of businesses, and the things that are the most valuable to our community are right here under our nose and should be preserved, and that's our historic resources. We've got historic resources, and they must be protected. They add great financial value to our community." And then Marty Osborne also, who's a preservation contractor, said that the building has historic value and it has nostalgic value. It has better quality than the ones that you go to codes and build by the codes now, and he does build new buildings, too. He did over the Chico's Building and the old jail. So I just say, let's keep Williamson County green, let's not send it to the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Ms. Rudy Jordan.
I'm Rudy Jordan, former director of the Heritage Foundation and of the Downtown Franklin Association. I worked with so many of you to try to get streetscape downtown. You all have worked with us, County Garage. You've done a beautiful job on the Judicial Center. There's so many things that we've done together. This town and this county have a national reputation for being good stewards of our historic resources. I just hope that you will at least delay this decision to hear more about how we, as a community, can come together and save again one of our very special historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Mr. Kevin Thibodeau. How bad did I chop that up, Kevin? Is that close?
Kevin Thibodeau, I live at two oh seven Foxwood Lane in Franklin. I'm a real estate consultant and co-owner of a marketing and advertising firm here in Williamson County, but that's not, that wasn't always the case. Over two years ago, my wife and I relocated our business and our family to Williamson County. We relocated from a state where my family had lived since the late eighteen hundreds. We made a tough decision to relocate because we lost hope in our city's future. Our city had become known for its poor decisions. The backward thinking included a lack of appreciation and understanding for what made our community unique, the things that gave our city a sense of place. Among other things, our community leaders constantly chose to destroy important and historic properties that contributed to the community's uniqueness. As lifelong residents of our city, many of our city's decision-makers grew up with historic structures that were so quick to destroy. They simply had no appreciation of the importance, their importance as cultural and economic development tools. They didn't understand that a city's cultural history and uniqueness equals big business, which equals jobs, which equals quality of life. In a sense, the same bulldozers that these city leaders were using to demolish our city's historic structures were also pushing the most talented, educated, and capable people out of the city in search of a better, more progressive city in which to live, work, and raise a family. We count ourselves among the many capable people who chose to relocate to another city and state, many who relocated here in Williamson County. Our search pointed us to Franklin. The city has a sense of place and uniqueness and a history that makes you want to call it home. But the Franklin we know did not, the Franklin we know did very little to earn its uniqueness. Franklin inherited its uniqueness, its history and its charm and its sense of place, its historical structures. You are the caretakers of our inheritance, and I implore you, do not squander the city's rich inheritance. Great towns and cities don't lose their status overnight. They lose it one family at a time, one business at a time, one unique building at a time, and one poor decision at a time. As a realtor, I work with people every day who've moved to Williamson County because of its unique character and history. Comments will report in today's Tennessean that keeping historic Fleming Hall doesn't make economic sense. You can't put a price on uniqueness and history. No amount of money can buy good public relations that a city's uniqueness and history brings to the table. Take it from someone who's out there selling and promoting the city every day. You can't put a price on good public relations and the value that saving historic, saving and restoring historic Fleming Hall can bring to Franklin. But that also goes both ways. When a city begins destroying its important and unique historical structures, the bad publicity puts a dent in the city's image that won't go away anytime soon. People are watching, businesses are watching, corporations looking to relocate are watching as these types of decisions are made. You learn a lot about a city, about how it values its past. Other cities are spending huge amounts of their budgets trying to create uniqueness that Franklin already has, that it's inherited. Let them build facades that mirror history. Franklin has the real thing. Every penny you dedicate to saving and restoring our city's rich history helps ensure that we'll have a rich future. As our caretakers, please make the right decision to protect our inheritance. Don't destroy our valuable county resources. Other cities have mastered the status quo. We're not other cities or other counties. We're Williamson County, we're Franklin, and we know better and we deserve better. We can make this work. I ask you, please, vote to save and restore the historic Fleming Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the Citizens Communication. Part of the agenda, and as Ms. Stewart did not speak, I allowed each of the last two or three an extra minute, so you got your full time. Thank you for coming and sharing the input with the Commission on this part of the agenda. Moving on to communications and messages, let me take care of some housekeeping situations. Resolution number three oh eight eleven, three oh eight, excuse me, three oh eight one, that's the resolution, that's the first appropriations resolution has been pulled. Three oh eight one has been pulled by its maker. We also have a late filed resolution, resolution three oh eight sixteen. This is a resolution as it relates to Williamson Medical Center. It's been late filed. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening? I see no objection. And to accommodate some schedules tonight, as we have pulled three oh eight one, the chair will move that late filed resolution, three oh eight sixteen, to the front. We'll hear it first, because we, some of our personnel tonight need to move on to other commitments, so we'll hear the late filed resolution in place of the three oh eight one that was just pulled. Any objection to that? I see no objection. I think that's all of our communications information. We'll now move on to proclamation honoring Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad. County Mayor Rogers Anderson and I have signed this proclamation. It involves and touches so many commissioners, so I'll let Mayor Anderson introduce the resolution, the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, have the county commissioners where your district's children feed into Centennial, please join me up here. If you would, just step down. And at the same time, if I could, I'm going to get Steve Smith, Mr. Chairman, to read this proclamation. I'm going to ask the Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad to step up and step forward and let Steve read this into the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thanks for the heads up, Mayor.[1690.01][1690.01](Laughter). Proclamation honoring Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad. Whereas the competition cheerleaders from Centennial High School competed in regional and state competitions during the fall of two thousand and seven, and whereas the competition cheerleaders from Centennial High School were grand champions at Jam Fest in Louisville, Kentucky, with the highest score of all school teams, and whereas the competition cheerleaders from Centennial High School won second place in both Alabama and Kentucky regional competitions. And whereas the competition cheerleaders from Centennial High School won second place out of sixty-four squads in the Small Varsity Division of the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida, and whereas the two thousand and seven, eight Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad members and coaches are seniors Izzy Glinsky, Darrell Sparkman, and Morgan Gardner; juniors Sheridan Richardson, Faith Hall, Jordan Parks, Becca Bedok, Audrey Love, and Christine Moon; sophomores Lisa Mancy, Tara Davis, Jennifer King, Kaitlin Chezak, Izzy Aradondo, Catherine Traxler, Ashley Evans, Melissa Campbell; freshmen Taylor Ward, Rebecca Traxler, Grace Little; coaches Barbie Morgan and Jay Nofsinger. Whereas commissioners representing districts two, four, ten, eleven, and twelve have students attending Centennial High School, now therefore be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Representatives will be appointed to the board of the Centennial High School Centennial High School, now therefore be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 10th day of March 2008, hereby congratulates the Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad for winning second place in the Small Varsity Division of the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship competition and recognizes the level of excellence exemplified by these outstanding individuals known collectively as the 2007 and '08 Centennial High School Competition Cheerleading Squad.[628.32][628.32](Applause).
I thought Steve did a real good job on that. Let's try the next group. Could I have the commissioners from the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th? First one down gets to read.[668.57][668.57](Laughter). I could have the districts that are relating to Franklin High School. We would have put all this on this resolution, but there's only so much room on here. And at the same time, could we have Franklin High School to come out, please?
The Franklin High School Varsity Cheerleaders not here?
Didn't get the memo. I guess.
Well, these are your county commissioners that were sponsoring this.[706.51][706.51](Laughter). And on behalf of that, Mary, you wanna accept this for them?
I'd love to.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to ask David Coleman to come up and we give him, let him give us an up-to-date on our finances, on our...
Mr. Mayor, we've got one more proclamation unless...
Oh, we do. That's right.
Commissioner Green and Commissioner Chalfont, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start by saying that my wife and I have known this lady for over 25 years. There's probably no one in the Nolansville area that has given so much to so many people.
Olivia, would you please come forward?
And I tell you, it really made the county proud. Whereas the Ms. Senior America Pageant is a national nonprofit organization that strives to present the positive aspects of aging and to act as an educator. And whereas, by giving women 60 years of age and older an opportunity to display their inner beauty, talents, and elegance, the Senior America Pageant seeks to draw attention to the achievements of senior women. And whereas, the pageant encourages senior ladies to share their experiences, knowledge, and enthusiasm for life. And whereas, Mrs. Alice Olivia Haley of Nolansville was the winner of the Ms. Senior Williamson County Title Award at the 2007 Williamson County Fair. And whereas, the 2008 Ms. Senior Tennessee Senior America Pageant was held on Saturday, March 1, 2008, at the Hydel Fine Arts Center at Cumberland University in Lebanon, Tennessee. And whereas, after winning the evening gown competition, Ms. Haley was crowned as 2008 Ms. Senior, Ms. Tennessee Senior America. And whereas, Ms. Haley will compete at the Ms. Senior America Pageant in Atlantic City, New Jersey in October 2008. Whereas, we are pleased to honor Mrs. Haley, who is a very active member of the Nolansville community, for her personal achievements. Now therefore be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 10th day of March 2008, hereby congratulate Mrs. Alice Olivia Haley for winning the Ms. Tennessee Senior America and for bringing honor and recognition by representing the Williamson County Fair presented by Tractor Supply Company and its signed Bert Chalfont Commissioner, Louis Green Commissioner, Rogers C. Anderson County Mayor, and Chair 2008 Williamson County Fair Board.[936.61][936.61](Applause).
I would like to tell you all that I am so proud and honored to represent Williamson County and Nolansville, Tennessee, where I have lived for over 30 years, and I've lived in Tennessee all my life. And I promise to represent this state with honor and dignity and all the way to Atlantic City, and I will do the best to do my duty for God and my country and y'all. Thank you.[969.11][969.11](Laughter). Bye.
Commissioner Green, we could have asked her to do a part of that rap, right?
We could have.[987.32][987.32](Laughter). She would probably do it.
Our congratulations to Olivia for representing Williamson County. And Olivia, good luck in Atlantic City.
Thank you so much. I need your support. Like Laurie did.
Thank you very much. Report of county offices, department heads, Mayor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Try this again. If I can get David Coleman to come up and give you a report on the financial situation of Williamson County.
Mr. Chairman, I'm 60, but that's where the similarity stops.[1029.75][1029.75](Laughter).
We will agree with that, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, the three reports that we normally give each month, the budget report through January the 31st, everything there appears to be in order, and the tax collections are coming in. I think Mr. Davis has given a report to you tonight that we're actually maybe just a little bit ahead of schedule of the collections last year, but everything appears to be fine there on our budget report. We do have the report from the Cool Springs Marriott for January, and I can then caution you about that, as they had mentioned that month would probably be down a little bit. And we did have a shortfall for the county's part of about $6,600, but we've been assured and that they're very confident we're gonna have a strong spring there, so we'll be looking for the next report. And then finally tonight, my report is the privileged tax report we give you monthly, and we've been watching this very closely over the last several months to continue to have a slide on the privileged tax. This month, we're collecting about 36% of the previous year's collections, and we're on target. If we hold the percentage that we've gained through February, that we'll be collecting approximately $5 million, which again, just to make sure that we're all aware, by the end of the year, could be up to $3 million short of our projections for this year. So we continue to watch that. On the positive side, on the adequate schools' facilities tax, you'll see there on the far-left column, we've accumulated through collections and interest a little over $1.5 million. And as you have given us direction on that money, I'm sure next fall that when we look at additional bond borrowings in the market and additional schools being built, that we will probably take a look at that a little closer next time and maybe come to you with a suggestion of an appropriation on that towards those new buildings. But that is on the positive side on the adequate schools' facilities. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, ask TMA to come up. They would like to present the county with a check. I think Debbie Henry is here. Is that all right with you?
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Henry. When you bring checks, we'll let you know.
Mayor Anderson, Chairman Narin, and commissioners, thank you very much. As managers of the Vanpool program, the TMA Group establishes rider fares that include a $0.20 per mile van replacement and depreciation fee. The amount is collected for replacement and is transferred to the county's Van Escrow account. I'm happy to present at this time a check in the amount of $23,183.80 for the period of July 2007 through December 2007, based upon 115,919 total van miles traveled during this time. I am also happy to report that to date, a total of $356,977.29 has been paid to the county through the Vanpool program. We have 411 riders that use our Vanpool program five days a week. 35% to 40% of those riders are Williamson Countians. So as you can see, it is a, continues to be an effective economic tool for this area in turning those wheels and getting people to work. So we appreciate your support, and at this time, I'm gonna give you guys the check.[1261.83][1261.83](Applause).
Mr. Chairman, I've got two or three other items I'd like to draw your attention to. For you that, on the commission that follow how we did on the sale of the bonds, let me report to you these following numbers. At your last county commission meeting, the next day, we sold some bonds, and sometimes it's better to be lucky and have perfect timing, and it's exactly what has happened on this particular case, and I applaud you all in your wisdom for allowing us to do it at this particular time. First of all, under the general obligation bonds, we sold $11,100,000 on 20 years for 3.9%, 3.9%. School bonds, we sold $19,250,000 for 20 years at 3.9%. On the hospital refinancing bonds, which was $7,100,000, this was a maturity of 5 on May 1, 2012. On that particular issuance, and for that shorter period, we sold those bonds for 2.409. That is great news for Williamson County and this AAA rating. It is probably not as good a news for those that are past 60 that are investing out there in the market, but that's exactly what is happening. We were very fortunate to get all three of these, two of them under 4%, and one at less than 2.5% on $7 million for refi on the hospital, so congratulations. I'd like to also bring your attention, particularly the county commissioners that are in districts, in the 8th District and going on into Brentwood and in Nolansville and College Grove. Last week, at the Highway Department, was an effort that was put forth by our Highway Commission that I feel very compelled to say thank you to all of those men who serve on that. Many of you know, back in December, we put together a summit, a water summit, in which we asked all of the utilities and all of the water districts and the municipalities to come to the rec center in December. Some 100 people came, showed up, and we had a discussion about water in Williamson County and the drought situation that had just occurred over the last several months. For two and a half hours, we heard the reports from TVA, from the Corps of Engineers, and from a group out of Nashville called TASER that talked about the drought. Are we on the front end of the drought? Are we in the fifth year of the drought, whatever that may be? We asked and we begged all of these utility companies to try to figure out ways to work together. Last week, at the Highway Department, after a lot of discussion, Mallory Valley, excuse me, excuse me, Mallory Valley stepped forth by working with their trunk line that they're going to be laying, and working with Millcrofton, City of Brentwood, and the Nolansville-Collidge-Grove Water Districts, they're upsizing their water lines from an 18 to a 30-inch water line. The significant part about this is, for the first time in the history of Williamson County, because if we're gonna ask people to do things, we have to be able to step up to the plate likewise. We went to Eddie Hood, and we went to the Highway Commission, and we asked them, can we run that through the road? Could we get into the road bed? They assured us, their engineering firm of H&amp;D, which is Heathcock &amp; Davis, that they could bury those lines six and eight feet down into the ground, avoid going into people's yards, going through the condemnation, excuse me, not the condemnation from a utility, but they could through a utility district. But having those discussions and opening up a hole that's big enough to put a 30-inch pipeline six to eight feet down into the ground is a very difficult chore. But working through these different utilities, working with the Highway Department, the Highway Department granted unanimously to allow them into the road bed, and then hopefully in the fall of 2009, we will have a 30-inch water line that will be serving more of those residents, all up and down those different utility trunk lines. So I want to say thank you to Mallory Valley, and thank you to those other utility districts for stepping up, and thank you to the Highway Board. A lot of discussion tonight, or a lot of the comments, were made under the public comment section about the piece of property that we own out at BGA, Fleming Hall in particular. The last several years, four or five years, we have been trying to handle a piece of property that we've got out there. Today, I had a conversation with Mary Pierce, and Mary Pierce's conversations are never short, you all understand that. But she was very passionate. I know Rudy called me, and I just didn't get a chance to call Rudy back. And I asked Russell a few moments ago if he would pull that resolution for 60 days. I concur, this commission has concurred for many, many years in working with the city and the preservation groups all throughout Williamson County. But that building is in bad shape. The pictures today in the paper told you just exactly what it's like. I've asked, I will ask Mary, and just a few moments ago, went up to her and told her what I was gonna do, Russell's concurred with that, to pull it and give us some time for their groups, preservation groups, the men and women that can go in there and do another evaluation. We will start this process, but I've asked for 60 days. You do not meet next month, and in the month of May, and they take it through the committees, they give us some prices on this piece of property, that what it would cost to restore it. It is not that we're against restoring anything in Williamson County. Many of you have been here just as long as I have. We've gone through the streetscape. Many of you voted in the last couple of years to exchange property with the city of Franklin, with the county, so that we could preserve the county side of it, and the city could kind of preserve the internal structure of the cities. We've worked at many, many different levels, and we will continue to. It won't hurt us to wait 60 days. But I think sooner or later, we have to address that piece of property. We need space in this county. The schools are bulging, we are bulging. There is some space out there. Throughout all this discussion, we said we would try, to the best of our ability, to put a building back out there that we could all use and utilize. But that time is here. Land is very valuable in Williamson County. In the next few months, you'll be seeing another proposal to try to help relieve some of the crowdedness that we're occurring at the ALC Center, the jail, et cetera, et cetera. We have got to address some of these needs. It's never an easy solution, and it's not very fun to have to lead the charge that you want to take a building down. But we absolutely have to have some help on this. Mary has assured me that she will get this done, and I'm gonna hold her to her word this time, and Rudy, and all of the others, that they step up and work with us and help us to figure out. And it is not gonna be an easy job. The building does need repairs, needs repair. It's at several different levels. It is an eyesore to several of the people out in that community that are calling. And for those people that have purchased those homes that are remodeling, they are beginning to see that piece of property that we have that it's all boarded up, so it's only fair to all of us. But 60 days won't hurt us, Mr. Chairman. But I would ask that they, as quick as they possibly can, and that would be at 8 o'clock in the morning, call, we'll get them the keys to the place, we'll send our property people out there, because we've done the best job that we could, living in the restraints that we've got. As you noticed, there wasn't a commitment to put a building back tomorrow, was to try to get that down from a liability standpoint, to try to get on with what we need to do out there so that we can move on down the road. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions that you may have. I would ask, as soon as I get away from here... I would ask as soon as I get away from here if Russell would make the appropriate motions and I ask him to wait till I could get up here because at the same time, they, the preservation group needs to understand we need to address this in some way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Little, is it your request that 30814 be withdrawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to respectfully pull 30814.
Thank you, sir. So 30814 has been pulled for consideration tonight and in support of what Mayor Anderson has asked and the committees have been working on this very hard to bring this to a resolution. You know, it is, it is an embarrassment that, ladies and gentlemen, that's what was on the front page of the paper today, that's a county building that's boarded up and it's just, it's not something that we, we need to take some action, but I would like to make this request from the chair as chairman of this body, that this study be done and that you bring this information back to me so that I can refer it to the appropriate committees of the county commission so that some resolution to this issue can be addressed at the May 12th meeting of the Williams County Commission. So if we could do that, if you will work with me and the mayor to get this back so that I can properly refer it back to the property committees, the budget committee and all the appropriate committees of the county commission, then I think that's an appropriate request and I recognize this time Commissioner Langston, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to simply say to this body, I think this issue has probably caused me more anguish. I know what we have to do. I've taught it in that school, in that building for 22 years. I appreciate the group wanting to come in and do this and I know that the county would ultimately have to make a decision, but I hope it's a decision ultimately that everybody in the county can work with and respect. I thank the county for what they've done over the last three years that I know of, working hard from the school system to Mayor Anderson and his people trying to resolve this issue. 60 days will not hurt and I appreciate the time that's being given for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Williams, please.
Mr. Chairman, but I just want, I have on another matter before the mayor leaves the podium, I'd like to be able to ask me another question.
Okay, all right, sir. I'll come back to you. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask for this to be deferred tonight and so I appreciate Commissioner Little and Mayor Anderson going forward with this pulling of the resolution. I just wanted to read something very quickly by Patrick McIntyre. He's the executive director of the State Historic Preservation Tennessee Historical Commission. He was very concerned about this. I got other calls from friends in Williamson County and also in Davidson County who had been students at BGA, but one of his points is that he certainly believes that there have been many buildings across the state that have been in disrepair and seemingly perhaps couldn't be brought back but have been rehabilitated. It does take vision, it takes money, but he is absolutely resolute that whatever he can do, he wants to play a role. The commission may be eligible for a planning grant from our office to assist in the study of the building and he really feels like it's a centerpiece in Williamson County and we've got to try our best to see our way through this, to see if we can do an adaptive reuse and it has been successful. There's actually a booklet entitled from the National, from the preservation, National Trust for Historic Preservation, entitled "Community Guide to Saving Older Schools." So it is an issue across the country when you have a building 100 years old that's been used for education that we may have to use for something else, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockman. Any other questions, comments on this issue before we go back to Commissioner Williams? Ms. Pierce, will you publicly state that you will work diligently to meet that schedule?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's my job, it's right here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
I was going to ask the mayor to ask Joe Horn something, but I saw Joe just walk back in the door just a few minutes ago and I'd like to be able to pose a question to him.
Mr. Horn, you have been dispatched.
Good evening. Yes, Commissioner?
Joe, I was trying to catch you before the meeting to ask you this question. It has to do with the red light out at 96 West and O'Hill Borough Road?
Yes, sir.
What is the process, how, where are we progressing with that red light out there?
The bids were awarded, I believe, at the December letting and we hope to have it constructed by, by June, I believe.
By June of this year?
Yes, however, I will add that the signal in Grassland is, will be 90 days late as of, as of March 15th, so.
Is that the one that's going in out there?
Yes, sir, the one that's hooded.
At Matt Wood?
Yes, sir. But no. The bid has been awarded and actually came in, came in within budget.
What's the possibility of going, and I'm sorry to catch you blind on this, but what's the possibility of going back to T-Dot about them putting another light across the road from, they've got, they've got a light on three sides right now?
Yes, sir.
How about adding that fourth light on the other side over there?
Actually, Commissioner, that was studied at the time and that was one of the delays from the project because essentially you have three ramps coming into that location there and one of the ramps due to the elevations, we could not get the transition done there. We worked with all three property owners and we did not proceed without telling, you know, we worked with them in an attempt to affect that particular fourth leg. We could not work that out for whatever, you know, for whatever interest of the property owner, you know, particularly on one location, it would have been very difficult to maneuver on that site. There is nothing in that we couldn't go forward, but this signal is bid and will be, you know, and will be, will go up as designed right now. We could go back and look at that at some future date though, I'm sure.
Was there a problem with the property owners giving the property up or?
I wouldn't, no, sir, I wouldn't characterize it that. It's more, it's more, it's more a case of topography. If you look out there, there's about a, there's about a three-foot differential and about 10 feet to get down three feet and that's not a way you can do a ramp.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mayor Anderson? Commissioner Walton, please.
Mr. Chairman, I had a follow-up with Mr. Horn if I could.
Mr. Horn?
Joe, you said the traffic light in Grassland is on a 90-day delay. What, why is that?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, Commissioner. I found it rather ironic, about three weeks ago in the newspapers, we found a lot of people that.
Took credit for it, I know.
Well, yeah, and not that I, not that I'm, find myself interested in being quoted in the newspaper, I thought that that was appropriate. I have no idea why it's, why it's 90 days late. The state is, the state is managing the job. I can make a phone call and I can report the results of that phone call.
Well, and that's, that's fine. I've always said T-Dot's a four-letter word, but.
They are our partners in this and we couldn't have done it without them, I can assure you.
The, if memory serves me correct, I know when the bid was let, I thought it was supposed to be up in December, so.
Yes, sir, that, well, that, I think December 15th and that's, December 15th was, I think, the contract, I believe, read honored before December 15th.
So we're, we're now going 180 days.
Perhaps they didn't say which year, but.
I understand, but basically we'll be 180 days beyond what the contract called for.
Well, 30, 30, 30, that's 90 days, so.
They're turning it on this month?
No, 90 days, 90 days from.
90 days would be January, February, March, so March 15th would be the 90th day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And as far as that goes, you know, I, you know, again, I can follow up on that. The standard operating procedure on signals is you see a hooded signal, then the next time, then several weeks later, you'll see the hood's removed and you'll see flashing and then 10 days to two weeks hence, you'll actually see the signal functioning as intended.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Mr. Hancock, please.
Yes, just follow up with the mayor on the water. Who's the wholesale provider of that water that's going to that 30?
John, that is Harpeth.
Harpeth Valley, thank you.
Any other questions of the mayor? I see none, thank you very much. Moving on to Williams County Schools Director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
I placed at your, place a book for you to read called "The Maltese Falcon" and the reason I've put that there is because if you haven't heard, the city of Franklin is embarking on an effort to help increase literacy in Franklin called "The Big Read" and this is the book that the people will be reading. We've given them to the school board members because they touch education in the city of Franklin and of course, so do all of you. So we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to participate in "The Big Read" if you should choose to do so and if you haven't read it, you might have seen the movie, although some of you are certainly too young to be familiar with the movie. I'm not too young to be familiar with the movie, but it's a pretty good book and there will be events going on related to "The Maltese Falcon" and to murder mysteries and to the era in which this was written across the city of Franklin from March 29th into May. We've had students at Centennial High School and students at Franklin High School reading the book and working on it, criminal justice classes involved in it and other students involved in this already. It was better for them to read the book now instead of waiting till later. I plan to put events in the FYI that I do weekly to keep people updated on what's going on within the city of Franklin on "The Big Read" and there will be some PSAs on the television and in the radio and different people participating all over the place in "The Big Read." So now you don't have to worry about checking the book out of the library or going and collecting it from someone else, you have your own personal copy. And once you finish reading it, you can pass it on to someone else that might enjoy reading it, we'd appreciate that. Spring break is next week in our school district, so I know it's here already. So next week, our schools will not be open. Our central office is open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but we're also closed Thursday and Friday. So if you need to be at the schools or do any business with the schools, if you don't get it done by this Friday, you're going to need to wait a little, wait a little bit, although upstairs you can do a little business with us Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week. I do thank you as always for honoring our high, our high school cheerleaders as you always honor our national champions and we're also very proud of them, we appreciate that you are as well. We do have a resolution that I think Mr. Davis is going to also pull. I don't know what the process is going to be from that. Our first resolution about textbooks.
It's already.
You already pulled it? I missed that, I guess I was watching the audience or something, I apologize.
We pulled that at the start of the meeting.
Okay, I did miss that. Well, now that you've pulled it, good. I wanted to talk to you briefly about it because I didn't want to argue for you not to pull it, I just wanted to thank you because as we, we think this is a philosophical thing that we think you also believe is a good idea and we think we would like to get into the habit of buying our textbooks a year early so that when we start school, every child can start school with a textbook. And what we've experienced is by not being able to have funding until the second Monday in July, we go to the bottom of the list at the Tennessee Book Company in terms of being able, where our orders go. So if the Tennessee Book Company runs out of books, then our children's books go on back order. So we thought it would be a good idea to try to start purchasing like next year's books right now, so then in next year's budget, we put the following year's books. We think it's a good way to budget, but we have probably just chosen the wrong year to do it and we didn't, had we realized what the bottom line of our next year's budget looked like when we started this thinking process and this philosophical process, we probably wouldn't have brought this resolution this year to the board or to the commission. But we brought it to the board, they passed it, the education committee was very kind and supportive about it and then we also, at the same time, we're beginning to see the bottom line of next year's budget and the budget committee in their wisdom and I do mean that, I'm not being facetious at all because I think they looked at it the way budget committee should look at it, decided that this is probably not the best year to do that and we don't disagree with that and the board certainly does not disagree with that, we totally understand that. But we would like you to continue to consider the philosophy of actually trying to buy textbooks a year early. So we thank you for at least entertaining that as a group and hopefully maybe next year will be a better year and we can think about moving forward on that philosophy next year. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have at this point.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Miller, hospital report?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners. Got a couple of items I think you'll find of interest tonight. Our diagnostic center in parking garage is on time. Knock on wood, I'd love to have that parking garage next week. April 1st, we're going to come up to the back of free campus. There will not be any smoking, chewing tobacco or anything allowed on the campus. We've had numerous complaints from visitors, patients, employees because the smokers did it to themselves. They stand right in front of the door, drop the butts down, whatever else, and then if actually, there was one lady I saw that we have some rubber sealants around those pillars out in front, she's putting her cigarette butts down there and just burned that ceiling up. We had replaced it with metal. But we'll do that. Murray Regional's already smoke-free, St. Thomas' is already smoke-free, HCA throughout Tennessee's going in June and Vanderbilt's, I think, going sometime around June also. The only other thing I have, the CON was taken back to the health board, they did again approve it, we have not had the summary judgment, they have not proposed giving it to our attorneys yet, so we have until May to make our decision what we're going to do. So, that's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doug Hood has requested to address the commission to update us on a couple of items, please, Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I've laid before you the new newsletter for Longview Community Center, which we're very proud to show you. Also, we've given you a shirt and an invitation to the dedication, which will be on April the 12th. We invited you out early at 8:00 in the morning and the dedication will be at 10:00. There'll be tours for the commissioners and other city officials from Spring Hill and we certainly would hope that you would come and I've had a couple of comments about the shirts, about the sizes, they all run small, so don't be offended by the size, we're here. Hopefully you'll enjoy wearing those on that, on the dedication day. We're very proud of this facility and I'm very proud to tell you that it's on time and on budget, which I'm glad to tell you. Staff's very excited about opening this, we're looking forward to it and on another note, kind of a sad note, but yet a happy note, the offenders were caught who vandalized our center at Longview. And I'm sorry to say there was two young juveniles, they have been arrested and then the process through the system and I personally want to thank our sheriff's office and the city of Spring Hill Police Department. Without both of those agencies, this would not have happened and the hard work that they put together and the seriousness that they took this. And also the many residents who called, called me and talked to me about somebody defacing a taxpayers' building and how important it was to them that this, these people were caught and the seriousness of it. We took it very seriously and I know you did and again, from Parks and Recreation Department, we thank you very much for your support and enjoy doing these kind of things for our residents and really look forward to seeing you all there. You have invitations there and I hope you enjoy this newsletter.
Mr. Hood, you briefed the chairman when this happened. Would you just share with the commission the extent of the damage and what, what the costs have been associated with this repair for these two juveniles?
Yes, sir. When it happened, it was, it was on a holiday when I was called early in the morning, it happened on a Sunday afternoon because we had had workers in the facility till 3:00 on Sunday afternoon. So it happened between sometime, we believe, 3:00 Sunday afternoon and early Monday morning and I believe that would have been President's Day, I think that's the day we were off. Because I was called very early in the morning and went out there with some other staff members and there was basically what had happened with not giving too much of the detail about the entrance, the walls had been painted with spray paint. The walls had been painted with spray paint, ceiling fans were painted with spray paint, there was graffiti on the walls of written word. The people took, went on the top of our walking trail on the brand-new gymnasium floor and threw several glass fixtures onto the gym floor, spray painted the brand-new gym floor, spray painted windows throughout the building, the outside of the building. It was, an estimate so far, which is being put together for the judicial processes, around $10,000, and I do want that to be said publicly, that is only an estimate this time because it has not been confirmed. But after, as you know, when you fix a spray painted area, you can't just paint over the area that was spray painted, we have to repaint the entire wall to match color. The gym floor is still being determined whether it has to completely be done. When you screen a gym floor, you can't just replace it where the polyurethane goes on the top, we would have to re-screen the entire floor. And that could get into several thousand dollars, so that's still being worked on to make the determination. So it was a cowardly act of a facility that means a great deal to the citizens, and we're in the process of rectifying that.
Questions of Commissioner Hood, Ms. Hood, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I wanted to thank Doug Hood and his staff, not only for pursuing the offenders of this act and the effort that they put into this through their staff and all, I wanted to personally say that for this commission. And secondly, I want to personally thank Doug and his staff for an effort of having 39 visitors in this area from Ireland. They picked up on Thursday the 6th, our vans were out there at the airports, and we facilitated in getting all of those visitors picked up into, well, 27 of them to their appropriate places. And then again, on Monday, today, this morning, they were there at 6:30 for them to leave Embassy Suites at 7:00 and got them back to the airport with their luggage and everything else. This is not a small feat, you all. This is a lot of luggage and a lot of people, and the Irish do not move fast. They do not move fast. But we had a wonderful time, but without their help, we would not have been able to pull this off. And I want to thank them so much, the Convention and Visitors Bureau did a beautiful job, county commission helped support this idea, and we did officially twin with the county of Leish, Ireland. So I thank you so much, Doug.
You're very welcome. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I appreciate your comments about the building, but again, the credit for their apprehension goes to Dusty and our sheriff's office and the city of Spring Hill Police Department, I want to make sure that's acknowledged. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Doug? One last question. Are we gonna keep nice, accurate records of all these costs so these parents can pay the bill?
Yes, sir, I'm keeping very accurate records of that, and I will be in the courtroom when this is prosecuted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other committee wishing to report at this time, any other of the committees that are listed here, entertain those reports at this time. I see none?
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, Commissioner Bane, please.
May I make a correction? For the members of the Human Resource Committee, there's a memorandum, and the date is wrong, it's listed as today's date, it should read March 17th.
Okay. March 17th, the HR committee, that's for a meeting of that committee, Commissioner Bane?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Other committee reports or questions? I see none, let's move on then to elections and appointments. This is recommendation of the county mayor to the Emergency Communications Board of Directors. Their four-year terms expiring March of 12. Districts 1 and 2, term expiring is Ken Bryson. The nomination is Ken Bryson. And districts 4 and 5, Riley Amaker, and that position is open, we're still interviewing and looking for a candidate to fill that spot, and at the point in time that we have that nomination, it will be coming back from Mayor Anderson. So I'll entertain a motion.
No further.
Commissioner Jones, the motion, Commissioner Greer the second to accept that districts 1 and 2, and the open, if they're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, four-year terms expiring March of 2012, term expiring Don Crowhan, nomination, Don Crowhan.
Take it.
Let's just take them all together. Brian Sanders, recommendation, Brian Sanders, and then John Kane. There's a continuing review for that position, so I'll entertain a motion to accept all these. Commissioner Brockman made the motion, who did the second? Commissioner Hancock the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. County Commission, these are our appointments to the Highway Commission, two-year terms expiring March of 2010. From the Southwest District, Renis Baker, nomination is Renis Baker. From the Southeast District, the expiring term is Charlie Bennett, the nomination is Charlie Bennett. Commissioner Hancock, the motion, Commissioner Lynch the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. The Industrial Development Board, six-year terms expiring March of 2014. Diane P. Ellis, nomination Diane P. Ellis. Burgess Oliver, nomination Burgess Oliver. Dan Parsons, nomination Dan Parsons.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, the motion, Commissioner Smith the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Let's go ahead and take the zoning appeals. Zoning Appeals Board, the five-year term expiring 3/12, term expiring, Don Crowhan, nomination, Don Crowhan.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch, the motion, Commissioner Jones the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So ordered the appointment then of Don Crowhan to that position. The next item on the agenda is the sheriff, filling unexpired term until the next general election of '08, August of '08, resigned Ricky Hedley. And the nominations are Thomas E. Campsey, Arnold Kevin Carroll, Dwayne Duhon, Mark Mittermeyer, and Robert Dusty Rhodes. Let me talk about a few housekeeping things and inform you of a couple of things before we go into this process tonight. At 4:05 this afternoon, I received this fax in my office from Tommy Campsey, and I'm giving you a copy of this because I asked Mr. Campsey to write down what he wanted to communicate to this commission, and he's done that, and faxed it to me at 4:05 this afternoon in my office, and I accepted this statement, I'm gonna read it for the public. It's from Tommy Campsey to me as chairman of Williamson County Commission. Reference interim sheriff's position, date 3/10/08, 4:00 PM this afternoon. At this time, I wish to withdraw my name from consideration for interim sheriff. I fully support Chief Deputy Rhodes for the position. I appreciate the kindness that I was shown by the commission in the past couple of weeks. I regret not being there in person tonight, but due to a medical emergency of a family member, I will not be able to attend. Respectfully, Tommy Campsey. Mr. Campsey called me about 3:20 this afternoon, shared with me the situation regarding one of his family members that would keep him away tonight, and so this is at my request, he wrote this, and I shared with him, if he didn't make it tonight, I would give you this so that I didn't re-say what he told me. So this is from Tommy Campsey, so as of this minute, and with your indulgence, this does remove Tommy Campsey from our consideration tonight as in the voting process to determine the interim sheriff of Williamson County. Second thing that I want to talk to you about, and just ask your permission at this point in time and give the chair guidance, there's nothing in our rules that allows these candidates who have properly put their packet of material in our packet, by our legal definition, everyone that included their information in the packet that went out has in effect nominated themselves. So they don't have to have a nomination tonight to be considered as a part of our deliberations tonight. So the four people that are left, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Duhon, Mr. Mittermeyer, and Mr. Rhodes, are, by their submitting the information, are on the docket to review tonight for voting. I will take nominations from the floor by any commissioner, if there are nominations from the floor. So that's the process that we'll be going through. Now, to give the chair proper correction, each of these gentlemen have asked me as chairman for permission to address or speak to the commission and just introduce themselves so that we know who they are, and I've told each one of them that I will ask the body itself if there's any objection. If I get two objections, we won't allow them to speak, but I did tell them that if they do speak, I'll give them two minutes to speak, to introduce themselves. So let me ask you at this time, is there any objection from any county commissioner from my allowing each of these candidates or anyone that will be nominated to address the commission, because our rules do not provide for that? Is there any objection? I see no objection, so gentlemen, those of you that are prepared to come to the commission, we will take these in alphabetical order and go from there if there are no nominations. And then the last thing that I've done, so that the county commission, working with Council Mosley, have worked very carefully to make sure that before this commission takes into consideration any candidate for this interim position, that they all have met the legal requirements, the statutory requirements as required by Tennessee Code Annotated 88102. And at this point in time, I would like to recognize Council Mosley, because there is an issue with one of the candidates, and I'll let Council explain that to you, to let you know what I would like to ask your permission to do, and then we'll go from there to proceed with the election. Council?
In the process of preparing for tonight, one of the things required by statute is that any candidate for appointment or election filed with, in the case of appointment for a interim or successor sheriff, file with the county clerk a certification from the post commission as to fulfilling certain requirements. We have one nominee, Mr. Duhon, who has completed all of the requirements except one, therefore did not receive the certification, verification from the post commission could not be filed. My reading of the statute is that is a strict requirement for appointment as an interim sheriff, and therefore, while he could be heard by the commission as to why he would run, and he only has to do that for the election prior to the filing deadline, but for the appointment, it would have had to have been by today, while he could be heard, he would not be eligible for appointment by this body tonight for the interim sheriff's position.
Mr. Duhon, that has been explained to him, he understands that, and he has asked the chair, which again, subject to your approval, the gentleman has followed all the rules, we're not gonna consider him for the interim appointment, but I want your permission, if you so grant it, to allow him his two minutes tonight to introduce himself to the commission and go from any objection to doing that. Okay? Mr. Duhon, at the proper time, we'll allow you to speak to the body and go from there. Okay, at this time then, we have before us the Arnold Kevin Carroll, Dwayne Duhon, Mark Mittermeyer, Robert Dusty Rhodes. Are there other nominations from the county commission for the consideration of the interim sheriff appointment tonight that's before us for consideration? Any nominations? There are no nominations and no additional considerations, so at this time, I would like to recognize Arnold Kevin Carroll. Mr. Carroll, if you would, please come to the microphone, and if you could, we'll give you two minutes or so to address the commission, and then we'll move on from there, so welcome.
Mr. Chairman, honorable commissioners, county mayor, citizens of Williamson County, my name is Kevin Carroll, and I'm vying for not only the interim position tonight, but also the Republican nomination for the office of sheriff of Williamson County. I appreciate everything that this office has done, and I would like to expand on some of those ideas. There is a great history of law enforcement within this county, and I believe that with the proper leadership, that sort of law enforcement professionalism can be carried on through. What I'd like to do, some of the things, I'd like to be able to improve the professionalism as far as some of the members of that agency, I'd like to reallocate some of the key assets within that agency, to put some of those items back where they belong. I'd also like to work directly with the folks from Animal Control, and also directly with the folks from Keep Williamson Beautiful to prevent the illegal dumping. So I appreciate the time that I had tonight, I appreciate those of you that I've already met with and spoken with, I appreciate those of you that have listened to me, and I think I've met with a few, talked with most, and communicated with all. So again, thank you all for your service, and I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Duhon, please, Dwayne Duhon.
Good evening, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I finally get to put a face to each of you, I sent my material to each of you. My name is Dwayne Duhon, and I am very much interested tonight to announce to you that I am running for sheriff of Williamson County. I think you have a bunch of fine men and women running for this election, and I feel like when you put the critique down in my qualifications, you'll find out that I have a very distinctive background in law enforcement and running a business. And I feel like your sheriff's department here is a corporation within your corporation of running a county, I watched you tonight make these decisions. I ask that you consider me, I understand I'm not capable for that tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I want to meet you, introduce myself to you, and let you know I am running for the office of sheriff, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mark Mittermeyer, please.
Good evening, commission, my name's Mark Mittermeyer, I'm 37 years old, I've been a Metro Police Officer for 15 years. I've been with Metro in all facets of law enforcement, from patrol to undercover work, drugs, prostitution. Currently, I'm in special investigations, assigned to the warrants office where I actively seek criminals that have outstanding criminal warrants. One weekend a month, I'm assigned to the gang unit, and I'm a native Williamson County resident, been here most of my life, and love to serve the community, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Dusty Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to get up here and talk to each and every one of you. Most of y'all have known me all my law enforcement career, I've been doing this for half of my life, and all of it with Williamson County Sheriff's Office. I've had the pleasure of working for some great men in the sheriff's office, and I've had the pleasure of working with each and every one of y'all. You know, we're gonna be having a change in August of this year when we have a new sheriff come in, and I don't think we need to upset the apple cart right now. I think that I have the strong leadership skills that each and every one of y'all expect. I think that I have the strong leadership skills that each and every one of y'all expect and deserve, along with the citizens of the county and along with myself and the rest of the sheriff's office. We are a professional sheriff's office and we will continue to operate as such. We have since I've been there for 28 years. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you've now each, heard from each of the candidates, the process that will be following tonight. We will have a roll call vote and Ms. Elaine Anderson, our clerk, will call the roll and I've asked her to call the roll. We'll do, assuming that there's one ballot, we're going to do the first ballot, alphabetical A to Z. If there are other ballots, we're going to start with Z to A. And then we'll come up just so that we make sure that, you know, we get everybody's record recorded. So when she calls your name, and let me do this, give everybody a warning in advance, I'm going to activate every mic so that I don't have to keep up with her. So I'm just giving you advice in advance. All the mics as of this minute are on. So as she calls your name alphabetically, give her the name, last name if you would, of the candidate that you're voting for, for the interim sheriff of Williamson County, please, Ms. Elaine.
Tom Bane.
Rhodes.
Bob Barnwell.
Rhodes.
Mary Brockman.
Dusty Rhodes.
Bert Shalfont.
Rhodes.
Arlene Cook.
Rhodes.
Greg Davis.
Rhodes.
Jeff Ford.
Rhodes.
Lou Green.
Rhodes.
Reva Greer.
Rhodes.
Pardon?
Rhodes.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
John Hancock.
Chief Deputy Rhodes.
Judy Hayes.
Rhodes.
Betsy Hester.
Rhodes.
Ricky Jones.
Rhodes.
Doug Langston.
Rhodes.
Russell Mittel.
Rhodes.
Tommy Mittel.
Rhodes.
Clyde Weach.
Rhodes.
Mary Mills.
Rhodes.
Houston Nevin Jr.
Rhodes.
Jason Parr.
Rhodes.
Steve Smith.
Rhodes.
Jack Walton.
Rhodes.
Ernest Williams.
Rhodes.
Cheryl Wilson.
Rhodes.
24 Rhodes.
Thank you very much. Let me get all the mics here off and back on. Chief Dusty Rhodes, you have been elected unanimously by the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to serve as interim sheriff. If you would, the sheriff, come on forward and I'll allow you to make any comments.
Well, first off, let me thank you for your vote of confidence that you've given in me and I promise you I won't let you down. I also want to just say that we will continue on as we have and do the best job that we can for each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Notaries, each of you have received the, excuse me, I'm sorry, jumping along. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, I'm just, point of order, does, now that he's actually the sheriff, he needs to be sworn in as sheriff? Is that a process?
Yes, he will be sworn in. As the chief deputy, he will serve until he is himself sworn in. So that can happen at any point now.
Other questions? Commissioner Hester, please.
Just want to say that I'd like to thank these gentlemen for their resumes and their time that they have given to us to present them. They bring a lot of experience in the community, their schools, and all kinds of law enforcement and I appreciate their, bringing their resumes to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Williams, please.
In support of my vote, I'm probably the one person sitting on this county commission that deals with the sheriff's department on a daily basis. And I can say to you that they operate in a very professional manner. It was unfortunate they had this cloud over the head of sheriff's department, but that was removed and the department itself continues to operate very professionally. And I say that to you all because I want you to have confidence in your vote because I think that needs to be said because I do deal with them daily. And in fact, Dusty's going to be presenting his budget tomorrow and we'll see how we stand. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hancock, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also want to thank the entire department for getting the sheriff's patrol in the county through a very hard time in the life of that department and professionally, I don't deal with them every day, but the professionalism they've showed, each and every one of them, the command staff, Chief Deputy Rhodes, through this process, it certainly says volumes about our sheriff's patrol. Thank each one of you.
Anybody else before we move to the notaries? Well, from the chair and I think the commission members that have indicated their support, Chief Dusty Rhodes has done a wonderful job in his leadership and it has been a very difficult time for all involved, but I want to thank Dusty and all of his command staff and encourage all of you. And it's, I was thinking, as Commissioner Williams talks about his involvement every day from being in the courthouse, there are many days that I would encourage you to spend with these folks because the more you know about what they're doing, the more of service you can be to them. And I appreciate them all, been on a lot of sobriety checkpoints with them and encourage you to become involved with that as well. So thank you very much. Let's move on to the notaries. You've received the notary list that was sent out in the mail. I'll entertain a motion to accept those notary lists. All in favor? Excuse me, Ms. Wilson, the motion, the second, Commissioner Cook, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Let's take a 10-minute recess.
Okay, we've got the few planning, and then we're ready to jump to the hospital.
Yeah, I'm gonna do zoning and...
Zooming, you're gonna pull the hospital to the front, is that what you said?
Yeah. Let's see, do we have, we don't have a consent agenda, do we?
No, I didn't see. Is it a public hearing on both of these, or just one? I forget, two public hearings?
Two public hearings. Okay, we'll call the meeting back into session, we're moving on through the agenda, we've adopted the notaries, there is no consent agenda, moving on to new business zoning, public hearing regarding resolution number three dash oh eight dash three, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April thirteen nineteen eighty-eight as it relates to the bonding procedure for non-traditional sewage disposal system. So at this point in time, I will open the public hearing, if you wish to address the county commission, if you would, please come forward to the podium, give us your name and address, and we'll allow you time to address this issue. So the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address the commission? I see none. Public hearing is now closed, we'll now hear resolution number three oh eight three, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April thirteen nineteen eighty-eight as it relates to the bonding procedure for non-traditional sewage disposal systems. Commissioner Walton, please.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Brockman. The committee reports Water and Wastewater Authority, Commissioner Hancock? Thank you. Planning Commission, Commissioner Walton?
Ten four zero again.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please.
Yes, sir, this changes, the county had a bonding system for this alternative or non-traditional sewer disposals, and the state also has this, so this would do away with the county's part of it, which is a backup or redundant bond, so.
Very well. Any questions of Commissioner Walton on this resolution? I see none. Resolution three oh eight three is up for consideration, if you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, twenty-four yes, zero no. Moving on to the second public hearing regarding resolution number three oh eight four, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text adopted April eighteen nineteen eighty-eight regarding non-residential bulk standards in certain zoning districts. Public hearing is now open, if you wish to address the county commission this public hearing, please come forward to the microphone, give us your name and address, and we'll allow you the opportunity to address this issue. Anyone? Public hearing is now closed. Resolution number three oh eight four, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April eighteen nineteen eighty-eight regarding non-residential bulk standards in certain zoning districts. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman the second, Planning Commission report?
Eight fours, two against.
Eight four two against. Explanation, Commissioner Walton, please.
This changes the zoning ordinance to get in compliance with the comprehensive plan that we just recently passed.
Okay. Any questions of Commissioner Walton on three oh eight four? Thank you, I see no questions. If you're in favor of three oh eight four, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes, one no.
Twenty-three, yes, and one no. Resolution is adopted. Under appropriations now, we'll be moving on to resolution three oh eight sixteen, this is a late filed resolution that we pulled forward for consideration at this point in time. This is resolution number three oh eight sixteen, resolution authorizing the Williamson Medical Center to enter into a loan agreement not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars for the construction of an outpatient imaging center. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Chaufonte the second, Budget Committee report?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you. Williamson Medical Center Board?
It was unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please, Commissioner Little.
Because this loan agreement exceeds a three-year term, the Williamson Medical Center has to have an agreement through the county commission in order to go out and do this loan, however, this does not go on the county books, so I just want to make sure that's understood. Need any further explanation, we have several hospital people here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Little on three oh six sixteen? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Commissioner Walton? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted, so Mr. Miller, you and Mr. Webb, and everybody can take your leave. Have a good evening. Resolution three oh eight one has been pulled, resolution three oh eight two, resolution transferring funds between major categories for certain salary account codes in the two thousand and seven eight general purpose school fund. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Williams. The school board voted twelve yes, zero no. Education Committee, Commissioner Davis?
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Commissioner Little, Budget Committee?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Davis, please.
This is simply moving some salary money around in different line item codes, so it's hard to predict the professional accomplishments of each teacher or person on the staff early on. We do have some money to move around from other line items, so this is a net zero change in budget.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Lynch, please.
Some of these people are gonna get more than the guidelines that was put up last year, three percent.
Can I defer that to school professionals?
Yes, please. The question is, is will this cause some of these people to get more than the three percent guidelines issued by the Budget Committee?
No. It's just moving about the money around of the line items, just putting it where they might have been in seventy-one one hundred last year, this year they might be in seventy-one three hundred, and I'm just moving the salary to follow them, but I stayed within the guidelines with every one of them.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Lynch?
No, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. If you're in favor of three oh eight two, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Commissioners Cook and Ford. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-four, yes, zero, no. Resolution adopted. Resolution three oh eight five, resolution amending the two thousand and seven eight highway department budget and appropriate up to five hundred thousand dollars for replacement of bridge on South Hall Road. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson the second, Commissioner Hancock, the motion. Highway Commission report is four fours, zero against. Budget Committee?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a bridge that was built in nineteen forty. It's not only needs replacing because of its length of service, but it's an extremely narrow bridge, it's not, certainly wasn't designed for, anyway designed for the traffic rate that it has today. It's my understanding that the right-of-ways has been acquired by the highway department, and we've done a good job there, so, and we're gonna get some money from state aid, two hundred and twenty dollars of this, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of this will be from state aid. Think while I'll do it.
Any questions on this, this resolution? It'll also straighten that bridge out a little bit, Commissioner Hancock, and...
It is gonna straighten it out, and it's gonna make it wider also.
Correct. Any other discussion? Three oh eight five is up for consideration, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution three oh eight seven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven and eight emergency communications budget by forty thousand dollars for the purchase of emergency equipment revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston the second, law enforcement, public safety?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
These are grant funds from the state that are gonna be split between portable radios for, in fire engines and defibrillators in various county buildings, basically equating to first responder use and protection of life.
Any questions of Commissioner Smith on three oh eight seven? Thank you, I see none. If you're in favor of three oh eight seven, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution three oh eight eight, resolution transferring funds in the amount of sixty thousand dollars between major categories within the two thousand and seven and eight highway department budget. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Green, Highway Commission, I think was four fours, zero against. Budget Committee?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
Some of the budget lines had some money they could get by without, and some of them were short, so what they did, they transferred that money where they had a little excess money to where they needed some in some of the lines.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Lynch on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor, three oh eight eight, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Everybody who voted, wishes to vote? Commissioner Brockman? Okay. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution three oh eight nine, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven and eight sheriff department, sheriff's department field division budget by eleven thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents revenues to come from state reimbursements. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton, Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Five yes, zero no on the original motion.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Four fours, zero against, and I'd like to amend it to add forty thousand dollars to this amount, so that the total will be fifty-one thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents.
Second the amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Little has made the motion to amend, Commissioner Smith seconds the motion to amend to fifty-one thousand one thirty-three oh five. Any discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Williams, please.
Where's the, where's the additional forty thousand dollars? What difference between the original resolution and the fifty-one thousand?
The, Mr. Chairman, the original resolution was the amount included in what they had to date, and we had another resolution in Budget Committee for forty thousand dollars to go ahead and put that out for another, to prorate it on out for through the rest of the year, and rather than bringing two resolutions, we, the Budget Committee said, let's just amend this one to include both amounts. They were identical resolutions, just one had, was including an additional forty thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Other questions on three oh eight nine? Let's vote on the amendment to amend it to fifty-one one thirty-five. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote on the amendment? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-four, yes.
Twenty-four, yes, is the amended motion, so we're voting on three oh eight nine as amended for the new total of fifty-one thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents. If you're in favor of the amended motion, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution as amended is adopted, twenty-four, yes, zero, no. Resolution number three oh eight ten, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed four million dollars in aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills the second, Budget Committee report?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please, Commissioner Little.
I'm speaking for this three oh eight ten and the companion three oh eight eleven. This is four million dollars that was not included in the last bond sale. We're going to go to the market with this, get a competitive bid, and go back to the bond market in the fall. This way, we will only be borrowing the money that we will need, which will probably be up to half of what we actually need on this, actually all we will draw on this before the next bond sale.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Little? I see none. Thank you, sir. If you're in favor, three oh eight ten, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Please record, please record a vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes, one, no.
Twenty-three, yes, and one, no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution three oh eight eleven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed four million dollars of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal and of interest on the notes. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills the second, Budget Committee report, please.
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Companion to the one we just passed.
Any questions of Commissioner Little on three oh eight eleven? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no button. Everybody's voted. Record of vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes, one, no.
Twenty-three, yes, and one, no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution number three oh eight twelve, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven and eight public transportation budget by a hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred dollars revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills, Budget Committee report?
Four fours, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
Says it's coming out of unappropriated county general funds. These are funds that are, we received a check tonight from the van pool, and they are put in a specific line item in our budget, and so we're drawing down these funds to purchase five vans from the van pool.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner Little on three oh eight twelve? Commissioner Williams, please?
Does this program pay for itself?
Other questions? Okay. There are no further questions. Excuse me, Commissioner Mills, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that you let Ms. Henry speak. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that you let Ms. Henry speak to this question. Debbie Henry?
Ms. Henry, would you like to address this question as it relates to, does this program pay for itself?
The way this program works is that we collect the fares each month for these vehicles. Uh, the riders pay for the fares. For the county, it's point two, three, five cents per mile that's collected. Those funds go into this fund, and out of those, that fund, then we purchase the vans to replace. It will be of note that in the current fleet we have of forty-four vans, we have only two of the original vans that were purchased in the original fleet. So, these vans have to be replaced after a hundred thousand miles or five years because of safety reasons.
Commissioner Williams, please?
Do the people that use this program, are they mainly underprivileged?
No, they are not. Actually, we have two vans that come out of Brent Meade. So, we have a wide range of people that use our services because of the cost of commuting is so high these days because of gas and wear and tear, and so, um, this program removes about fifteen million miles on the highway each year through this, this one program we have.
Is there any thought gone into people that come out of Brent Meade that use this program, the county's paying for, or partially paying for, uh, that we would charge them more money than they would to somebody that's underprivileged?
It has to be done on a flat fee. It has to be done. There's a, a, um, calculation that goes into this that's set by the Federal Transit Administration, and so we have to honor those fees that are set appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, do you have anything to add that we need to, before we move on to other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify a little bit, and probably need to give a little history for some of the new commissioners, and actually, this just started about the time I came here in nineteen ninety-five. The county did have an initial outlay of cash to buy the first fleet of vans, but since that time, the, through a state grant pays for the actual operation of the TMA, the contract they run for us, they bill us each month for that, and we submit it to the state, or they actually submit for us, and we're reimbursed totally for their operations. The purchase of vans comes from two areas, the riders' fees that she gave us a check for tonight, and for the older vans that are sold at auction, all that money goes back in. So technically, this program does not cost the county taxpayers any money, is funded by fees, selling the old vans, and through the state grant program.
Commissioner Mills, any follow-up?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Lynch, please?
You got as many vans as you bought to start with?
We originally bought ten vans in the fleet, and now we have forty-four. And they are all full, and we have a waiting list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, Commissioner Bean, please?
Call the question, please.
Please. Is there a second? All in favor, call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, question's been called. Three oh eight twelve is up for consideration. If you're in favor of three oh eight twelve, press the yes button. Oppose, you know button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes, one, no.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes, one, no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution number three oh eight thirteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven and eight Archives budget by twenty-five hundred dollars revenues to come from state of Tennessee grant. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second, Budget Committee report, please?
Four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
This is grant money from the state of Tennessee to purchase supplies and equipment.
Okay. Questions of Commissioner Little on three oh eight thirteen? See none? In favor of three oh eight thirteen, press the yes button. Oppose, you know button? Commissioner Smith? Thank you. Court of vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-four, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Three oh eight fourteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and seven and eight Capitol Projects budget by two hundred thousand dollars. Pulled. I'm sorry. And, and as we stated earlier in the meeting, uh, you know, we, we heard the commitment to have this back, and it will be referred to the appropriate committees when it comes back, so that it can get back to us for final decision by our May twelfth meeting. We don't meet in April. We'll take this under consideration at our May twelfth meeting. Resolution number three oh eight six, requested by the Williamson County Tax Freeze Committee, resolution to adopt a property tax freeze program as provided for in the two thousand and seven Public Acts, Chapter five eighty-one.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the motion. Commissioner Barnwell the second, Budget Committee report?
Four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Tax Study Committee?
Four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Tax Freeze Committee?
Eight, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes, and any other of the sponsors?
We passed a resolution earlier in the year about this tax freeze program, and we did a, a resolution of intent. This is simply bringing it back for the actual, uh, resolution adopting it. Um, Trustee Davis is here. I hope you will find at your place some very valuable information that he has provided with us, uh, to us for regarding our tax relief programs that we already have, the number of people, and the cost, and I certainly appreciate this information. And, uh, Trustee Davis is here, if there would be any other questions.
Trustee Davis, would you come forward and just give the, as you do that, clarify, because it's, I know a constant issue that you have in your office, as well as all of us are being asked these questions. I, I know you're not tired of answering this question. Clarify one more time, when this is effective, because there's, continues to be confusion over, you know, what happens, this is for next year, so if you could just overview that quickly, so that as folks will watch this program, they'll understand how this implementation of a tax freeze will work, should this commission pass this tonight.
Thank you, Chairman, there, and county commissioners. If you pass this tonight, it's effective tonight. Whenever you pass it, it's, it goes into effect. We will start taking the applications tomorrow. We already have people that are, if asked about it, will be in tomorrow. Uh, this is based on, uh, last year's income. We will consider two thousand and six income. Uh, we really will not have any effect on our taxpayers, on our customers. Uh, if you don't have a property tax freeze this year, it's...
Tax increase.
Tax increase, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, it will have absolutely zero effect on our customers. Where it's gonna have an effect is the year that you have to increase taxes, and this freezes their taxes for those sixty-five years of age and older. Uh, I'm a little tired of that, and I think the income's four, forty-four thousand dollars it's been raised to now. It will raise each year. Uh, if you go up on property taxes, I've forgotten what it is. You remember Commissioner Aaron, what it is, per penny?
Thirty-three thousand.
About thirty-three thousand dollars, something like thirty-four thou, every time you go up a penny, what it costs you out of the budget, it's about thirty-four thousand dollars, based on the current assessment by the, uh, by Mr. Anglin. We will start taking the applications now. Uh, we'll go through that this fall. We will have to have three separate processes, one for the state property tax, uh, relief program, one for your Williamson County Broad-based Tax Relief Program, and one for the Property Tax Freeze Program. But we're ready for it, uh, thanks to Mayor Anderson and his staff. They're working on some remodeling in our office now to accommodate our customers. Uh, I think we're in good shape for it. We're ready and willing to serve the people of Williamson County to, for your program. Can I answer any questions, or everybody?
Any questions? Commissioner Barnwell, please?
I, I would just like to compliment the, the committee I served as a member of, but it was a, it was an interesting process, and, uh, I'd like to commend Mr. Davis for the workload he's getting ready to accept. Uh, good luck.
Thank you. We look forward to it. It's a rare opportunity that you can step up and help the people of our county. You all have a good opportunity in front of you, and I, I feel like this will pass, but I would encourage you to, to vote for this on behalf of the people in our county.
Well, this is in response to the constitutional amendment that passed eighty-four percent statewide last year. This commission and its tax freeze implementation, Study Committee's been reviewing this very carefully, and, and very important note that everyone should realize is, if in fact, Commissioner Little and his committee, through the Budget Committee this year, does not have a tax increase, and that's our hope that he's gonna be able to do that, then this, this will save zero taxes for anybody until a future date, and we're looking at next year, and this would occur. So, if there's no tax increase, there are no implications, and people should not be coming into your office to apply for the savings, because there will be none.
No, but we will still have to take those applications and put them on, but I would say to you, to the county commissioners here, uh, if you don't, for the next few years, if you don't have a tax increase, this will also help these people when we have rear appraisal in two thousand and eleven. It'll be a great aid to them.
Commissioner Brockman, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Joey, so, someone who's a property owner would be required to bring in their two thousand and six, in this case, tax return, and then, then they would have to do it in oh-seven as well.
Yes, ma'am, you have to.
And then proof of their age. Those two are those, the two documents that they would...
We want entire proof of income, everything, uh, not only the tax return, but, uh, the, the preponderance of the people that we serve on tax relief are on social security, and we try to remind our customers, we even try to give them a folder if we can. Every year, I'm on social security too. Uh, every year, uh, you get a statement from the Social Security Administration of how much you're going to draw for that year, and we wanna take that, because we take the lesser amount. Everything else is gross income. We don't get into deductions, uh, on, on our broad-based program. We mimic the state guidelines. Uh, the only thing that we did differ on mine and your program is we considered household income rather than deed income, and Commissioner Brockman, the property tax freeze is for everyone whose name is on the deed to the property.
Okay.
All their income counts, and income is income is income is income is income.
Thank you.
Anybody that's listed on the deed?
Yes, sir. Uh, may I make this one comment?
Yes, sir.
And where a lot, you might wanna advise your constituents, uh, as we get older, we tend to wanna start looking to our children and put them on our deeds, so that if we die or when we pass away, they don't have any problems of getting that property. But there are better ways to do that, to put our children's names on a deed, and we encourage all of our customers to go see an attorney and talk about things like a lifetime living estate and other things like that, rather than just putting your child's name on that deed.
Commissioner Hester, please?
I'm sorry.
Greer, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Greer.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that a person does have to apply every year. I don't know if we've made that clear, that people think maybe they apply once and they don't have to apply again, but you will have to apply every year.
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll have to show your proof of income for every year. So just wanted to mention that.
And we do that already on both the programs, on the state program and also on the broad-based program. We see our customers every year.
Commissioner Hayes, please.
I just want to compliment you and your staff for getting this information, helping us through this deliberation. And thank you again for not charging anything extra or needing any more money for the rest of the year. Mr. Davis and his staff will absorb their expenses as best they can for the remainder of this year without any additional expense to the taxpayers. He also is going out to senior citizens and other groups talking about all of our tax relief programs. And I would encourage anyone who is getting a program, please have him come. It's very good. We already have 864 people who own some type of tax relief, and I know there's a lot more out there that could be. So please continue calling Mr. Davis and get him to come.
We did point out one thing that Davidson County, I forget the numbers, Commissioner Hayes, but when they went into the property tax freeze program, they picked up a large number of people who had never heard of property tax relief and really increased that. That does concern me about the workload, but isn't it exciting that we have the opportunity though to tell someone, there's some help out here for you. And it's not welfare either. Any more questions?
Any other question of any of the sponsors or any other commissioner on this resolution?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. I see none. So if you're in favor of 3086, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 30815, resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee report?
Four, four, zero against.
Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Education Committee?
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven, four, zero against.
Parks and Rec Committee? Commissioner Lynch?
Three, four, zero, I mean, one against. Five, four, and one against, too.
Is it five, four, one against or zero against?
One against.
Okay. Five, four, one against. Law Enforcement, Public Safety, Mr. Smith?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation Commissioner Little?
We do this annually. This is the CIP that we, where we're documenting our privileged taxes.
Very good. Any questions of Commissioner Little? Commissioner Cook, please.
I don't know how many, or maybe I'm just the odd one here, but I don't have anything about education in this. I mean, everyone else has given their five-year plan. And mine doesn't have one.
It was in the budget documents that we had, but it didn't get to the County Commission documents. I know it came through, the Budget Committee had it.
It did come through education as well. It's just not here.
We, Mr. Chairman, we just need to get that to the rest of the commissions.
We just need to, if we couldn't, if you'd make the note to get the educational part of the five-year CIP plan and share that with the commission because everything's attached except the education. Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Other questions on 30815? I see none. If you're in favor of 30815, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anybody voted, wish to vote? Record vote, please.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Twenty-three yes and one no. Resolution is adopted. Any other announcements or any comments before we close our session this evening? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A couple of meetings ago, we had some expenditures to improve the Fairview soccer field, softball fields, and Page softball fields. I'd like to ask the County Mayor if he would give us a status of what's going on with that expenditure.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Several months ago, two, three months ago, you all had a discussion back and forth on where to add, whether to add $40,000 if I remember correctly, that amount of money. After you all had a discussion, and then even later on, you had asked for reconsideration of that vote. The money, eventually that money was approved. We took it to the school board. The school board did not accept the forty, the amount of money. It came back at their last meeting that they would authorize the Parks and Recreation to do the work. So you all have to make a decision. If you, you voted for that money to be put over into Parks and Recs, we sent it to them. The school board did not want to accept it, and they did authorize the county Parks and Rec. I will tell you that there are these, these two areas, I think the motion was actually made by Mr. Little that particular evening. Mr. Jones has got some work out at Fairview, about $10,000 for a fence. Mr. Little has got some work that needs to be done at Page, not necessarily the amount that they wanted, but I am reporting that to you. So if you want the Parks and Rec to do it, there'll have to be some amendments or some adjustments on that, but clearly the school board did not accept that money.
Follow-up, Commissioner Jones?
Do I need to tell in a motion or send it back through committees?
I guess I'd ask the pleasure of the body that this is the resolution. Commissioner Hancock?
Chairman, I think when we finished up with this thing that night, that no one was opposed to these projects. There was just a lot of confusion about the process by which it took getting to us. We're getting close to the time that, well, we're already into the time these kids are using these things. Whatever motion would be appropriate for us to make, I'll be glad to make it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just simply, if you want us to do the work, we'll do it. These are not properties that we use. I think you all need to know that. It's a difficult thing for you all to approve money. I know the work needs to be done. I know we can do the work. Our Parks and Rec can certainly do those, but...
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Chair, second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Baines, second, to authorize the Parks and Rec Department to perform the work we're referring to at Page and Fairview that was approved and went through the committee on that funding. That's your motion, Commissioner?
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curiosity, why did not the school want it? I've never seen them turn down money.
Mr. Walton, I can't answer that.
And you also said it's something that we don't use, or...
Parks and Recs did not use those fields.
Commissioner Cook, please.
Can we build on things when someone who owns it, or...
We do a lot of work, if I can interrupt Ms. Cook before she goes there with this. We do lots of work every single year, all over this county. But the direction you all gave was to take the money, give it to the schools.
So we didn't have to do it that way?
Okay, moving on. Commissioner Williams?
I just think if we do it through the Parks and Recs, I think you're setting a dangerous precedent. I think it needs to go through the school system if it goes on school property.
Commissioner Tommy Little, please.
I was the original maker of the motion. And a clarification of why it went through Parks and Rec was because they were the ones who built the fields originally, and they were not built to the specifications that were asked for. They were built to the specifications that they had used at a previous field. And that was why Parks and Recs was asked to correct it because they were the ones that originally built it. At the time they built it, they were using the fields. Now they say they don't have enough travel teams that are using it, that now it is strictly being used as a school field. Now, my understanding with my contact with the school system was that they didn't turn the money down, they referred it to committee. They wanted it to go through their process, through their athletic director, through their athletic committee, and that they put it through the committee and then approved for the work to be done. But that was the reason why I put it under Parks and Recs, because they were the ones that built the fields to start with. And I thought it was, should be them that fixed the problem.
Commissioner Lynch?
I'm going to vote for this, but it bothers me when the school system could have had $5 million more money than they actually needed in their budget. Now we're going to move this money somewhere else. That bothers me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Parr, please.
Could I have just Dr. Sharber maybe comment on this?
Sure.
I think if you go back and look at your original resolution, you'll find that you approved Parks and Rec to have this money to do this work. What didn't happen was the school system was not consulted ahead of time to see if they needed this work to be done. That was part of the problem with the process because the school system, a couple of years ago, put together an Athletic Facilities Committee, and we all kind of agreed on what was going to be important to be done on our athletic fields, especially our high school athletic fields. We put together a priority list. We did an assessment. We came to you and asked for money to take care of the safety issues and the equality issues. These two projects were not on that priority list. And yet, the commission funded doing these two projects through Parks and Rec. All the board needed to do was to approve that it was okay to do those projects, which we do every time Parks and Rec does anything on our fields. Yes, Parks and Rec has done a lot of things. They put lights up. They've done a lot of things. But the school board is always aware of it beforehand and approves that work being done. The school board wanted to take this through their Athletic Facilities Committee to say, okay, Athletic Facilities Committee, is this a problem that these things, this was not in our priority list, and they said it's okay because there are other places in the district that have these things. It's fine, but it's the Parks and Recs' money, and they should do the work. The park, your resolution did not give that money to the school system. Your resolution put that money in with a whole group of things Parks and Rec was going to do. And the school system's stand is, yeah, go ahead, but it's Parks and Recs' job to do it because y'all put that money in their resolution.
Follow-up, Commissioner Parr?
No, it's fine. Thanks.
Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Sharber just answered most of my questions, but I do have one other query. Based on the explanation, it doesn't seem like it needs to come back to the commission at all. If the money's approved and accepted, Parks could do the work. I don't see the holdup. Did somebody help me with my confusion?
The motion was made to acquire the money. We can acquire the money. And it was given to Parks and Rec, and then it was taken to the school. To some degree, you all need to know that the money was not accepted by the school board for the work. Now, if you all tell us to do it, we'd be glad to do it. We do lots of things out there. But you all need to know, because there was quite a lengthy discussion on that night. The only way we can get that information out, because Doug's got, Doug's got to plan that. If it goes over, if it's under, fine. But it's not necessarily always, it's not our job to take care of those things when they're in those school budgets. And you all had quite a round robin that night about, about the issue of this $40,000. I totally agree with the superintendent that they didn't ask for it. It was amended here on the floor. So y'all need to know that.
Follow-up, Commissioner Davis?
I think I take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is clear as mud, but one more question. The amount of money, can you give me those figures? I just don't have them in my head.
$10,000 at Fairview, $30,000 at Page.
Okay, $10,000 at Fairview, $30,000 at Page. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Green?
Just for clarification, can this work be performed before all the activities start on these ball fields? I mean, this is not going to be, this is not going to happen before spring ball starts at the rec.
I would guess, I don't know, but it would seem that most of the spring, spring sports start today. So I think the answer to that would be no. Okay, Commissioner Walton? Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Brockman, follow-up?
I'm finished. Thank you.
You're finished. Commissioner Walton?
Well, I hate to keep being confused. And I think that, I think we all want these projects done, but it, there's confusion amongst everybody. And I would like to just see this go back through the committee systems. If, if, if the money's out there and they still can't get them done before spring ball, what's the hurry to do it tonight? It just sounds like to me it needs to be cussed and discussed further.
Is there a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Chair, second?
Second.
Your motion is to refer this back to the committees. Is that your motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion to refer this back to the appropriate committees of the County Commission.
You got a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
We can have two.
Mr. Banks, right?
No, you can do two.
Counsel?
This is motion for referral. We'd take the original motion with it if it passes.
So the motion to refer this back to the committees, if this passes, we'll take that motion with it back to the committees if this passes. If it doesn't, we'll come back and vote on Mr. Hancock's motion. Commissioner Jones?
In the spirit of everybody knowing and everybody being on the same page, I agree with Jack. We need to, we need to, everybody get on the same page and make sure we know what we're doing with this. And that's the way I feel about that.
Okay. Very good. Mayor Anderson?
I'm going to have to muddy the water a little bit more. If you amend this $40 million, does it take the whole?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. Forty thousand, does it take the other amount of money?
No.
We're not changing any of the prior actions at this time. All they're doing is, is the reconsideration of that would go back to committee. If you had a change, it would be at that point, and then you'd have to potentially amend that. But I think, I'll ask Mr. Coleman to help me out here a little bit. I think we're, we've borrowed money, have put that in the form of a resolution. I think the easiest thing would be to do, and I'm not telling you how to do your job here, but if you'll give us the green light, we'll work through this. Mr. Jones asked the question, what happened or what's going on. I've reported what's going on. All you need to do is give us a green light. We'll fix it, if that's what's going on.
Okay. Motion's on the floors to refer this back to committee. Any further discussion? Let's vote on Commissioner Walton's motion and Commissioner Williams, second, to refer this back to the committees. Have you got that loaded? If you're in favor of referring this back to the committees, press yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anybody voted, please? Commissioner Hayes, record the vote, please.
Sixteen, excuse me, fifteen yes, nine no.
Fifteen yes, nine no. So this issue will be referred back to the various committees of the County Commission, which will be your Education Committee and the Budget Committee, and then go Parks and Rec, and go back through Parks and Rec Budget and the Education Committee. So, so that resolution is adopted. Fifteen yes and nine no. Anything further before we adjourn the meeting? As was requested at one of our earlier meetings, if you're in favor of adjournment, get up and leave.